I don't have a problem with that, as long as we can get to a balanced budget.
When you started it, then, right now, we're not spending more than what our bills are.
So this budget, this year's budget is a deficit budget?
It is a deficit.
Last year's budget is, was not, and I think we're going to be returning, I think you talked, close to a million dollars from last year's budget as you close out?
I don't have that with me. Um, surplus, yeah, about 1.3 million.
Okay, so, so we're putting 1.3 million dollars from last year's budget into fund balance, okay? And, and, you know, thi- this year's, I think, what did we run? This year's budget deficit was 1.4?
I don't remember. I'll have to go back and look. We had budgeted more, but then we got in more money from the state, so it lessened the original budget.
Right, and that's the other thing board members have to realize, is like, you know, we set out our budgets, but, but it's, it's also a dynamic flow back and forth of actual costs versus budgeted costs from, from our budgets.
So what's going to happen when you hit the third part of our phase, if we jump up that much more on the construction? We're hoping we have a windfall from the state. We're hoping we don't run out of the fund balance in X amount of years, five, six, eight, I don't know.
So, again, projecting out is, is difficult, but we have to do some educated guesses.
That's the point, though. It is difficult, and I have a hard time taking money that I don't know is coming back in. I mean, I can't afford to do that in my own life, and that's a lot of times what governments get busted on for, is not planning on what they have.
Yeah, I mean, I understand, Mr. Carey. You know, i- it's, it's a, one's of a dilemma, you know, because we, we have these facilities that need attention, and, and I, I would submit that, that some, somewhere along the line, you know, these things have been kicked down the road until they've become more expensive, um, and, and they've become more crisis oriented. So I think the board needs to think about what, what can we do to avoid crises in our facilities? What do we need to get the space, um, you know, for, for our programs that, that may be tight or, or antiquated? Um, and, and really, what, what number, you know, for, for the, the project, and people support? You know, like, is it, how close on this borrow can we get? Knowing that there are unknowns, knowing that the cost of construction is only going to go up from this moment, um, and that, you know, it, continuing to not address space issues has a number of costs to it, um, to our programs and to our kids and our teachers, um, that, that, you know, that we, knowing that we can't solve everything at one time, the question is, what can we solve now? What are we comfortable with as we navigate a lot of challenges that, that, you know, we're facing from, you know, the, the loss of us or money, and, and just rising costs in general, and, and being a growing district, so.
Sure. I just don't want to get to the point where we, I mean, we're responsible to the taxpayers. I mean, that's a gimme, and it gets to the point where we go, hey, we got to max out every year just to try to keep this thing at bay, and we're still not gaining anything.
Yeah, I, I, I completely understand that.
I just have one, one question. The, if we go, if we don't go to, you said about two million dollars of buffer we have now, or a mi- a buffer?
From the, the project that we, so, so the project that we had is the lean bid, is 2.2 million dollars below what we had budgeted, which is already below what the, the original costs for the projects were, were budgeted to be. So, so as we have less scope, some of those other things will, will fall, you know, professional services fall, other costs fall, um, and, and, you know, so, so, I mean, that's where we are, Fred.
Yeah, but what hap- all right, so we don't go up that far. We got a buffer here. What, and so we, we don't have to pay back as much. What can that not pay back money be used for?
So, so a number of different things. I mean, like, certainly, you know, we, I would hesitate to necessarily dedicate that. It goes back into our budget, Fred, so we can use it for anything, to close budget gaps. I mean, it can be used to plug in different places, um, you know, whether it's capital, capital projects, whether it's salaries, whether it's, you know, I, I would, I'm not going to say additional positions, but, you know, I, I would say those are the two things it would mostly be used for, would be, you know, to try while we can to, to build up more monies for, you know, the, the board's desire to expand at, at elementaries. Um, if we have some pressing capital needs that we don't, we're not budgeted for, it could be used there. Um, you know, otherwise, it's diverted into our fund balance, um, you know, which.
Hey, that's, that's my biggest thing. It's, like I said, if these people, these positions were, I voted for, and a lot of board members voted for, were important, it means that we don't, that we can use that money, difference between going all the way up here and down here, that some of that money there can be used for the ESRS. That's what I want. Do you understand what I'm saying? I don't know if I'm.
It was a little hard to hear you, Fred.
I'm sorry. It's, it's the case, and we can, if we go all the top, then there's nothing there. If we only go so far, which you, you said we planned on doing, not going all the way to the top, how much more buffer do I need to cover the ESRS job, ESRS positions? Do, I'm try, you know what I'm saying?
So, again, I think it's a, it's a multi, it's a multi-part answer to that, Fred. You know, so, we, we know we have 1.6 million dollars of ESRS positions. At 1.6 million dollars is not going to be 1.6 million dollars, because we're going to use attrition, you know, and, and, you know, plug people in. Some positions may go away. Those people would be absorbed into, to, back to the positions that they came to, um, which may cause some, some, you know, domino effect.
Oh, okay, I understand that.
You know, B, until we work out and, and have an understanding of where we can slot and come up with a plan for that. Um, you know, the administration will prioritize what, what positions we have to keep. There are some that I don't see any way around us not absorbing into our budget. Um, you know, like the special ed positions, I, I don't see them.
Okay.
Um, you know, I, I don't want to sugarcoat this, uh, you know, conversation, you know, so, other concerns that have been mentioned, it's like, wow, like, what could we do? And I'm, and I'm not so much worried about the past positions, because those ESRS positions, when we were making the decisions about how to spend that ESRS money, we knew that those were temporary, and, and, and it was my understanding that the people who were being hired in those positions also knew that that would be temporary. Like, we didn't necessarily know if we were going to be able to continue that, because we knew this was like a sort of windfall, short-time thing that was meant to deal with, um, you know, education loss from COVID and whatever, right? So that was the, that was the point of those monies. But I, but I'm rather thinking about it in, in sort of a going-forward kind of way, right? So it's like, okay, do you, do you spend a million dollars on this particular project, or do you hire a person that could sort of help do a thing that you want to do? And so I keep thinking about, like, these instructional coaches as an example of a thing, right? So, um, Mr. August has convinced me of the value of instructional coaches. We don't have near as many instructional coaches as a, a district our size might have, um, and there's a, there's a lot of, you know, there, there's potentially a lot of value there. But then, I also think, like, well, hey, one of our biggest goals, uh, is student engagement. And I'm all, I'm all about that, right? Anything that we can do to, like, sort of help student engagement, that's great. I hire an instructional coach, there's an indirect link there somewhere, I would hope, right? Like, we're, we're creating, sort of, we're giving teachers better skills and better tools to be able to do their job, which would hopefully engage them. But sometimes the engagement can sort of occur a little bit more directly. And I think about band as an example of that, right? So, I'm, I'm not a band person. I was never a band. I didn't like hang out with the band people, but I see, like, how much value the kids in the music programs get out of that. And there's a whole bunch of research that shows that when kids play music and whatever, like, stimulates all kinds of other intellectual growth and whatever, but, but those kids, like, belong to something, right? And wouldn't it be terrific if every kid had something, like, that, that they belonged to something, like, as strongly as they do band, right? So I'm looking at that middle school project, and it seems like an easy cut, right? It's like a million dollars to do this bandroom addition, and I'm thinking, okay, well, that's potentially, like, one permanent position. And then I'm trying to weigh in my mind, like, the value of, of, like, one position, like, an instructional coach at the middle school versus perhaps creating an environment where you, like, you know, have this sort of direct experience, where the, like, you know that, like, that environment is going to contribute to, like, student engagement for a significant portion of the student body. And it's like, and, and so I, I'm, you know, I'm weighing these, and it's, and it's really hard, and, and I could probably be talked in either direction, but when I, when I keep thinking about engagement, I'm like, man, this is a, this is a capital investment that I think is going to have a direct effect on a whole bunch of students opportu-, you know, opportunities, and it's going to, like, allow for more students to participate. And, and I think we're super lucky in Shippensburg to have, like, so many people in our music programs already, and for us not to, like, enable that, like, like if we're, I mean, it's not like we're actively putting barriers in the way, but it's like, this is something that students already want to do, and, uh, you know, for a little bit of investment, maybe there's more students that want to do it. And, and those students are, you know, going to have friends, uh, they're going to be engaged, they're going to feel, uh, excited about coming to school, and they're going to, you know, feel like they're a part of the thing and stuff. So, I don't know, like, some of those thi- so, but when I weigh other things, like, man, I hate that we have to spend money on, like, secure entrance stuff. Like, I mean, it's so obnoxious, but yet, I get it. Like, we, we've got to. And that rear entrance, the rear secure entrance, I think is a serious problem, and, like, creating, you know, that, the, the sort of, um, hmm, what do we call it? The, the, those rooms that, that are sort of part of it, right? We were going to have, like, a counseling suite or something like that, and I think that, that stuff is sort of more and more needed. So, I, I, I'll stop talking. My, my point is, uh, I, I'm, I'm really struggling with a lot of these things, too, because I think of, like, the effect that it will have on, like, the sort of overall operating budget and the alternatives that could come, but I don't see anything here that seems extra, right? I mean, everything seems like it's going to have, like, real value in promoting, like, our number-one goals. So, I don't know. It's like, it's like, I'm, it's really hard. It's like this teeter-totter thing, but I'm sort of leaning towards feeling like this is, this is probably the right, right thing to do.
Thank you, Dr. Goetz, for your insight. Appreciate everyone's great dialogue and passion regarding the, the, um, construction project with the alternance. We can pick this discussion up again in the planning and action meeting, as it is a discussion item. Um, we're going to head into our planning and action meeting, so we're going to adjourn this one and head into the planning and action meeting. All right, um, so, calling the planning and action meeting to order. Roll call. Mr. Jim Bard.
Here.
Mr. Mike Carey.
Here.
Mr. Levi Kressler.
Here.
Mr. Darren Donovan.
Here.
Dr. Nathan Goetz.
Here.
Dr. Michael Lyman.
Dr. Lyman, are you there?
Yes, sorry.
No, no worries.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Here.
Mr. Kurt Nagel.
Here.
Mrs. Steph Eberle.
Here.
Mr. Arian Gonchar.
Here.
Ms. Lily Cal.
Here.
All right, will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we begin our deliberations this evening, let us once again be reminded of our duty to represent all of the children of this school community, regardless of age, sex, race, or creed, and regardless of need or ability. This meeting is being livestreamed and uploaded to the district YouTube channel. May we now have a moment of silence to reflect on our thoughts, plans, and actions on behalf of the students in the Shippensburg area school district, and may we also remember Carol Miller, Shippensburg graduate, Trenton Benner, 2003 graduate, Kevin Clever, 1999 graduate. Mr. August, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Moving on to citizens' comments regarding agenda items. Um, Ms. Wolfinger.
Hello, everybody. Becky Wolfinger, Southampton Township. Um, so I just wanted to send a shout-out to Mr. Fike and Ms. Enders, um, one from the high school program and one from the middle school program. On Saturday, they took, uh, both the middle school and the high school bands to Messiah, Messiah University for County Band Festival. We had seven children from the high school and seven from the middle school that were very proudly represented. Um, Nathan, talking about those band kids. Um, so, but I wanted to comment on the construction. So I just want you guys to make sure that you're considering, and I know that you are. I know, uh, on Thursday, Mr. Donovan and Mr. Kressler spoke about elementary, um, really being a kind of facet that's considered as you guys are kind of thinking through this project. And I would just, again, you know, kind of caution you guys, if you look at the enrollment numbers that I know Mr. August is going to talk about here in a minute, um, you know, we are continuing to enroll in K through three, and, uh, with the ballooning class sizes in elementary, I think that they have to be a part of the discussion that you guys are having right now. Um, it's not something that can be kicked down the road, in my opinion, and again, it's only my opinion. Um, I know there's always this, like, cautionary thing. Everybody's like, well, you know, 30 years ago, 30 kids in a classroom, uh, you know, we did it then, right? You did it then, and 20 years ago, you did it then, and five years ago, you did it then. The, the kids nowadays are not the same as the kids that, five years ago. They're different. They have different behaviors. They have different mental health needs, and so a classroom that has 30 kids in it now is not the same experience that teachers or kids had 30 years ago, 20 years ago, or even five years ago. Um, I think that that is definitely something that needs to be top of mind. Um, and with the projected budget deficit of potentially 5.5 million dollars, um, I think that you have to plan for it. It's something that you guys have to keep top of mind. Um, in my opinion, again, waiting three to five years to begin the K through five projects is, in my opinion, negligent. Um, I think that it has to be a part of this consideration. Um, how you do it, thank God, it's not my job to worry about anymore. Um, we're leaving that to you guys. Uh, but if I, you know, can add my input to it, I would just say that I think that high school needs to be looked very similarly to what middle school was in a phase approach. Um, I think that the project needs to be split, part of it to be done now, part of it to be done later, and elementary to be moved up closer to the timeline. Again, just my opinion. Um, I think that of the project list that you guys are working through right now, the, you know, the, the, the stuff that has to be done, right, is definitely the asset protection, because our kids have to have rooms that are heated and cooled, and they have to have internet, and they have to have lights to learn, and so that is a must-do. Like, that's, that's not negotiable. As a band mom, would I love to see the band rooms? Of course I would love to see those, you know, and, and I know our 200-plus kids that are in our band programs in our school district would also love to see those. But if they must wait for a couple of years, should we do that to consider elementary being bumped up? My heart says no, of course, but my brain says absolutely. It would be the smart thing to do. So, again, I, I think that, um, you, you have to look at this holistically, um, and, and I know that we are believers in this profile of a graduate. Um, it speaks to all of us. You know, we want our kids to be amazing human beings when they graduate, but I remind you guys that, you know, profile of a graduate starts in a kindergarten. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolfinger. Is there an, a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by, um, Mr. Nagel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carey. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to reports, uh, student representatives. Ms. Cal?
Thank you. High school happenings. The high school held, the high school drama club held auditions for Mamma Mia on December 12th. The Leo Club sold Kenny Grams on lunch, at lunch, um, on December 15th, 18th, and 19th. Holiday headwear and accessories were also on sale from December 18th and 19th. The judging for the holiday locker competition was held on December 18th. The high school held a three-day spirit week from December 18th through December 20th. The high school held a virtual financial aid night on December 13th after school for those interested in college funding scholarships in the fast reform. I will now pass the rest of the report to Arian Gonchar.
Thank you. Uh, the Key Club sponsored free cookie decorating in the cafeteria on December 18th. The algebra, biology, and literature Keystone exams will be held from January 3rd to January 10th. A focus on marketing careers field trip will be held by the high school on January 10th for students interested in the marketing of brands and companies. For the middle school, Sam's Student Council hosted a door decorating contest. The theme was snow globes. Winners, one at each grade level and one mixed grade level. We'll have snowball fights in the B gym near the end of the month. Sam's Students Council will, Sam's Student Council hosted a kitsch sweater consti- contest for the faculty. Teachers wore this, the, their kitsch sweaters on Friday, December 15th, and students voted for the top three best sweaters. The winners were Mr. Keen, Mrs. Carter, and Mr. Mark Neer. They received $10 Starbucks gift, gift cards. Sam's Students Count, Student Council also sold Santa grams during the lunch, the week of December 11th to 15th. $110 were raised and donated to the gift card fund for needy families. Students are completing their IXL diagnostics this week and the next week. Eight Sam's band students were selected to perform in the 2024 All Cumberland County Honors Band. And finally, Madagascar is this year's middle school musical, and rehearsals are up and running.
Thank you, Bo. Uh, the Transportation Committee met on December 14th. Mr. Kressler, do you have that report?
Sure do. Uh, so we met on December 14th. We discussed the bidding process for the next contract. Um, the committee looked at a PASBO outline, um, which is almost like, we, we used it as a, as a guidance for the committee. Um, we talked about making sure in our, um, what we want in our proposal that's going to go to bid, that, you know, we allow for plenty of coverage on field trips, athletics, uh, and all the other extracurriculars, as well as, like, your essential, just basic bus routing. Uh, we talked about the WEX fuel program, which is on here tonight, um, and the discussion agenda. The benefits of that is it's going to save some money for us. It also gives, uh, all of the buses across the district vans, uh, as well, more locations and places outside of just Shippensburg to fill up, uh, their fuel. Um, so if you have a football game that's two hours away, you know, you don't have to worry about making it back to Shippensburg, uh, to get gas. Um, so that's on for the discussion, and, uh, we also did just verify, making sure all of our field trips and athletic events are covered for the foreseeable future, and everything was good to go with that.
Thank you. Uh, the next two committees that met were the Safety and Security, along with the Policy Committee. Uh, the Safety Committee met on January 3rd. Um, items discussed were the camera progress. Dr. Stevens met with Triangle Communications for a brief training and discussed cameras in the back of the building, along with one defected camera. New business included discussion on the high school auditorium lighting and landscaping in the back of the high school to include illumination. Um, at the last meeting, Mr. Hessett spoke about the poor lighting at the back of the building, and administration is checking on the flagship Proud account balance to see what plans Mrs. Luffy has for the back of the building, and we may be able to incorporate some lighting into the back of the building with the building project. Mr. Lynn, Lyndon Muth and Mrs. DeLong attended a face-to-face train-the-trainer training. All of the required yearly three-hour staff trainings are complete, with the exception of the middle school. The state update, the PCCD group is meeting January 10th, and will release those grants by the end of January. We are expecting to get the same amount as last year, and I know that you would ask, and that's around $300,000. And this, uh, was split between safety and mental health, and there's also a school facility grant that will be available but is a competitive grant. The Senate is looking at Bill 907 to require one full-time armed officer per district, per district, and Shippensburg is ahead of the game, as we already have one of those and are compliant. KNW was at James Bird on January 4th to look at the sinkhole, and there will be more information on that to come. The Policy Committee met on January 4th prior to the committee of the whole construction meeting. The fruits of our labor are on the agenda for the first read tonight. The 600s are officially complete. Uh, this is more of just an FYI. We'll have the capacity to move committee meetings to the new admin building whenever the board and administration sees fit. Uh, Dr. Stevens is creating a second YouTube channel, just committed to, uh, committee meetings, and we will begin to, um, livestream committee meetings, if that is the will of the board.
I'm mayor. Mayor, on, on the Safety Committee, I wasn't able to be there, but, uh, here you say we have a full-time officer at the school district. I understand we have an agreement with Shippensburg Police Department, but we do not have a full-time police officer at the school district. We have a full-time availability of a police officer. I, with the, with the agreement we have in Shippensburg, I wanted to get, I went along with it, because I wanted to go, but that Iowa shooting just showed me that I couldn't, I had to say something. Those, those guys on Shippensburg Police Department are my friends. I worked with them for many years, and I have a lot of respect for them and everything else. But for me, I want a police officer in the high school every day, I want a, I'm a police officer in the middle school every day. I just want that on the record, that that's what I want. And that, I probably may not get it, but I want the people to know where I stand.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Moving on to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. Uh, donation report. Um, we've received the following donations. Um, College, College Board AP rebate check of $250, uh, to the senior high to use for AP testing supplies. Uh, Jeffrey Kunkelman, a $100 donation to support our Veterans Day program. Weigle and Associates, a $100 donation to the Mini-Thon at the senior high. A $670, a $1,000 donation to support, uh, the Soc- Social Workers Department, uh, and that ends our donation list. Um, our enrollment, um, inched up closer to 3,700, um, with, uh, a total of 1,152 elementary students. Um, we have 553 students at SACE. Uh, we have 840 students at the middle school, um, 1,118 students in the high school, and 28, uh, at IU or Lincoln IU locations. Um, and that puts us, um, right around 3,700, uh, which is roughly a little over, a little, a little above 100 from, from last year, uh, at this time.
Mr. August, the, the program that we signed up for here recently for the enrollment, um, the tracking of that, is that up and running yet, or?
So we have some training coming up, um, you know, with admin to, you know, learn the ins and outs of it, so it's, it's in the progress of, of getting everybody trained.
How often will we get updated on that as a board?
Uh, as, as often as we need. You know, we'll look at its capabilities. Um, you know, I, I think, you know, as we look at enrollment trends, I think, you know, it's, it's appropriate to have a committee of the whole, to bring that data forward to the board.
Thank you.
Uh, that concludes my, uh, my report.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Item 4A, approval of the minutes, uh, which include revised minutes from November 13th Planning and Action Meeting, minutes from the reorg meeting, and the December 4th Planning and Action Meeting. Item 4B, the finance report, to include the bills of payments, the financial reports, tax reports, and budget reports. Those attachments are available. Item 4C, grant approval. Administration is recommending the, um, the approval of the grant for the, that would range from 50 to 250 dollars. 4D, employee assistance services renewal. 4E, the proposed revisions to the Shippensburg Basketball Booster Club bylaws. That attachment is available. 4F, the high school exchange student. Um, administration is recommending that student from August, um, to the end of the fall semester and January of 2025. 4G, the ZU America Agreement. Um, that cost is $700 and will be covered by the PTOs. 4H, the disposal of obsolete high school textbooks. 4I, policies for the second reading and approval. 4J, the sale of old athletic uniforms. 4K is a expulsion waiver. 4L, Partnership for Better Health Foundation Grant. 4M is the personnel and professional and support. Uh, those are new appointments, resignations, substitute positions. Would anyone like to take any of these items separately?
I would about the bills. I have a question about a bill here.
Oh, well, attachments, attachments to the finance.
So you would like to take item 4B separately?
No. Two, under.
Well, yes, yes, yes. That has the attachments to it, yes.
Okay. So is there a, a motion to approve item A and C through M?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Kressler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Goat, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion to approve item four B?
We had to prove it before discussion, right? I make a motion to prove it.
Motion made by Mr. Scott, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Carey, discussion.
Reason why I pulled it out, uh, maybe you can, mostly you can. Normally, in, in, you're the, you're the head of all our construction, right? Doing it within the school district, is that correct?
Sorry, I just wanna make sure.
Are, are you the head of all, is SiteLogic the head of all construction within the school district?
No, that's not correct. SiteLogic is your construction manager for your high school and middle school projects only. You're not your construction manager for your stadium project. That is entirely KNW engineers.
So they're not, so when you speak about, when you have them speak here, they're not, how, how are you, how I'm trying to figure, are they just, they should be speaking for themselves?
Yes. I mean, I'm providing whatever in- information I can to you that we've discussed in meetings or, uh, we've talked about and agreed upon as a group. I'm advising you as your construction manager and giving you recommendations based on the discussions that we had.
All right, so your, the money you take out for your services doesn't include stadium for KNW?
No, 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 no. We are not a part of the stadium project.
Okay, but you, you always, you always group together when you do something, I just wanted to make clarify.
Well, so because KNW is, uh, your site civil engineer and they develop the drawings for the middle school parent loop, which as your construction manager, we estimate and provide updates on, um, those designs. In addition to that, they also provide, uh, the site civil work for building additions that you're considering and how, um, site alterations would support this.
All right, so when we get to the stadium, that you'll be out of it, between, between us and KNW. I, I just wondered, I saw a bill we were paying sixteen, paying them sixteen thousand dollars. I just thought maybe that was, that should have been under you, but I guess it's not.
It is not.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
So is there a motion to approve item? I guess we're ready. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to the action agenda. We have five A proposal to temporarily fix the middle school gym floor. Administration recommends the proposal with master care flooring to repair the middle school gym floor at the cost of one thousand eight hundred twenty-eight dollars and four cents. This will be a temporary fix to make the area safe. The funds for the repair would be taken from the assigned fund balance for capital projects. Is there a motion to approve action item five A?
Let's go make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Scott, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Carey, discussion?
Yeah, just real quick, um, so clearly like needs to be addressed and taken care of if you've been there. Um, it's temporary, so like how long is, we think temporary is? Again, we have a, like, a ginormous list of things across the district that we need to fix. Um, I'm just curious as to what.
I, I would hesitate to give a firm number that would, could come back to me. Um, I would just say that, you know, like, uh, that, that we're looking to mitigate the, the reasons why we got that problem. Um, and that we hope that it, it, you know, it's gonna be noticeably different than other parts of the, the floor. Uh, so aesthetically, I think it's gonna be a problem until the whole floor is addressed. Um, but I, I don't see it being something like a sinkhole that we have to go back and back and fix, you know, be- because of different circumstances.
Be- uh, because of the moisture, we're, we're preparing that floor for, because of the mo- moisture?
That's my understanding, Mr. Scott.
I know we've done middle, work in a middle school before, termites. Is that gonna be an issue here?
I, I was, I, I wasn't even thinking about that. I was just thinking about in general, like, our high school gym floor was really, really old and really, really bad and we had to replace. We did temporary fixes, which did, you know, means last us somehow fifty-four years. So, the one at the middle school is also quite old, I'm just curi-, you know, I was just.
Yeah, I, I think fortunately this, this part is, is not actually on the court, so it.
Okay. I, I'm just worried about, I know we had term, treated for termites and I just, I didn't want to continue.
I, I had not heard it was a termite issue, I'd heard it was a moisture issue.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to the discussion agenda. Uh, a quote, uh, six A huddle camera. A quote from huddle is attached for the indoor huddle focus camera for basketball, volleyball and wrestling. The quote states nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars. However, the yearly cost for the indoor camera is only three thousand dollar, which includes the subscription fee and camera.
Just to clarify for the board, that, that difference, um, is, is, uh, uh, extra features that huddle can do for different programs. Um, and, and we have our boosters, uh, lined up to pay for that and if they don't, then it just doesn't happen, is my understanding.
Six B, art room air filter. The art air room, the art room air filter unit installation total of six thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars. It will be coming out of the carryover funds for the high school. Quotes are attached. Administration will recommend the art room air filter installation. Six C, the Turner safety grandstands inspection. Administration is recommending approval of the proposal with Turner installation and safety to perform a full inspection of the home and visitor grandstands at the Memorial Park Stadium. The total cost of the inspection is five thousand two hundred dollars and will be taken from the unassigned, unassigned fund balance. A copy of the proposal is attached. Six D, motion for facilities. Mr. Scott motions that the board authorize the facilities committee in consultation with the superintendent and business office to thoroughly review project scope, contracts, design, specifications, project management, budget and financial matters for current and upcoming capital construction projects. This review will include a comprehensive review of invoices and change orders submitted to the business office. This additional layer of checks and balances aims to ensure the soundness and fiscal responsibility of all construction projects and recommendations related thereto before they are presented to the board as a whole for approval.
Sorry, I have a question. Is, I mean, this was obviously a big topic of discussion amongst us, uh, last month. So with, with that and of course, like, talking to our solicitor, like, it wasn't, you know, a terrible thing. But a couple of things have come up, like, in discussion is like, there's been questions about, like, a clerk of the works, about hiring a position. I guess my other thing would be, is the facilities committee still just meeting like as currently? Because I, I just imagine through, like, once a project starts, like, if there's a change order or something for one of those or whatever it would be, like, if you don't meet for two months, like, we probably can't get that information to the facilities committee in an advertised meeting quick enough unless we're gonna.
I, I would agree, we'd need to look at a revised schedule for the facilities committee to make it more frequent.
There are, it's already, they're already scheduled to meet again next week, so they will definitely be meeting more frequently. Any additional discussion? Um, as Mr. Kressler had mentioned, uh, the WEX fuel program. Administration and transportation committee will recommend approval of the utilization of the fuel program with WEX. This would replace our current fuel system and allow for a more fluid and updated tracking product. WEX will allow detailed fuel asset usage to include district vehicles and third-party contractors' usage, locations and identified discrepancies and patterns. Estimated twenty thousand dollars in savings for the first year. Six F is the contract with DJ Denner, Genergy. Um, and administration is recommending approval of the attached contract for the middle school dance on Friday, March twenty-second. And that cost is two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Six G, day of service mini grant. Lisa Bolt, ag teacher and FFA advisor seeking approval to apply for and accept funds from the National FFA Organization in the amount of four hundred dollars. If awarded, the funds will be used to purchase supplies of dog and cat treats and toys for the Cumberland Valley Animal Shelter as part of the day of service event. Six H, the twenty-four, twenty-five senior high school program of studies. Administration recommends approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five Shippensburg area senior high school program of studies. The draft and proposed list of changes is attached. Six I, the E-rate letter of agency and contract renewal. Administration continues to be extremely satisfied with EFG services and will recommend approval of the attached letter of agency contract renewal for proposal for funding the twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six school year. Six J, uh, the invitation to bid paving of the parking lot of the administration building. Six K, letter of credit and bonding for the paving of the parking lot at the admin building. Six L, um, the Shippensburg area school district speech services contract. Administration recommends approval for Clear Path Pediatric Therapy LLC to provide speech therapy and consulting services to special ed students in the district. The pay rate is ninety-five dollars per hour for all direct and indirect speech language services. Six M, exchange students per board policy two thirty-nine. Two exchange students, one from Germany and one from Netherlands, have met all of the qualifications to attend the Shippensburg area senior high school for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Administration recommends approval of those students.
I have a question, Steph, and you know I'm gonna ask it cause I.
The flags.
I'm just curious if, through some of these construction projects that, you know, I think that would be, like, hey, this is kinda like new, well, maybe like lobby redoing a cafeteria out front that I just think it's a great way. I, whoever came up with the idea, I've said before, of having students, like, gift us their flag of, of their native country and then, like, that's something we should show off forever, cause it's so incredible. Um, yeah, so I'm just curious if.
We'll keep that on the radar, Mr. Scott.
Love it.
Thank you for reminding us. Six N, policies for first read and discussion. The following policies are being presented for the first reading and discussion. Revised policies zero zero five, one ten, one eleven, one twelve, one thirteen, one thirteen point three and two hundred. The following policy is recommended to be retired and that is seven oh two point one. Administration will recommend approval and revised new policies at the January twenty-second board meeting. Six zero, early procurement for school asset protection. The administration recommends approval of the early procurement package of the one million nine hundred and sixty-seven dollar in order to avoid the ninety thousand dollar in material and equipment increases. See details below in the attached document.
I have questions on that one.
Okay.
Where are we, where are we gonna be getting the one point nine million dollars for this particular item right now? Do we hit, just pulling it out of fund balance, is that what we're doing or? And we still have budget questions, so I, what, just question that, that's all.
I believe Melissa has an answer for us.
I have an answer for you. I'm sure it's a little confusing, why, what is this early procurement package? What is it doing on here? It's a little bit self-explanatory. Uh, SiteLogic as your ESCO contractor, which is your energy, energy services contractor, which operates under the Guaranteed Energy Savings Agreement, okay? We are an independent contractor that can procure equipment as a part of the scopes of work that are related to the asset protection, which is primarily the work that will be procured under the GISA agreement. Under that purview, we can take equipment that would be included in the scope of work under the asset protection and we can take it to the district's preferred vendors and our vendors for pricing, which we have done. We did that in December, so we could prepare for our design development estimate. In those conversations with those specific vendors, we heard from them that the specific equipment, this is only the equipment that is on this list, will see a price increase after the first of the year. This is just what the equipment vendors do after the first of the year. There are material and equipment increases that will happen, happens every single year. For this particular, uh, equipment that you're seeing, it's ninety thousand dollars. We're providing it as an update to this board where you can make a decision. You can take action on this equipment and you can elect to say, yes, we would like SiteLogic to procure this equipment early in advance of the project. Or you can take no action. It is our responsibility to let you know that you have an opportunity to save about ninety thousand dollars on this equipment should you elect to have SiteLogic procure the work. Now, we would procure it, cause it is through our vendors. So we would need a board action saying, yes, SiteLogic, we are authorizing you to, or we are voting yes for early procurement. We would then be provided a purchase order to our subcontractors. SiteLogic would hold the equipment until the time is appropriate for installation. We would guarantee the warranties, everything that the material equipment vendors would require. And we would just hold it. But we're basically saying, if you wanna save ninety thousand dollars, this is an opportunity for you to do so through this early procurement.
And, and all that's part of asset protection, correct?
That is all asset protection. This is nothing outside of that scope. This is work that you are currently prioritizing and, um, have stated outright that you would like at minimum to occur within this building. So that's why this is in front of you tonight.
It's our deadline for saving the ninety thousand dollars, does it have to be done tonight?
Does not need to be done tonight. Uh, we're discussing it tonight and the latest that you could take action on it would be, uh, your first February meeting, really. Um, we, what we've done is we've communicated to our vendors, letting them know that this district is interested in this and that the timing of your meetings, um, if they could hold their pricing for us. And they have agreed to do so through, you know, like, mid-February.
We, it's something we need, right?
So Fred, i- if the board decides to move forward with the lean, or, you know, whatever the board moves forward with, if we're doing asset protection, we want to save ninety thousand dollars.
But the project, the thing, has to be done, so.
Right.
Don't pay me, pay, save the ninety thousand dollars, screw around and don't get nothing.
Uh, I, I will let that verbiage stand. I think you've captured it, uh, correctly.
Great. Any, any more questions on this? Okay, and there's a lot of detail in there, but you can just see the equipment list that's included. Thank you.
Last but not least, um, continuing the discussion from the committee of the whole, the high school, middle school construction project. The administration recommends approval of the high school, middle school construction project base bid, high school asset protection and the site work for the middle school parent drive and high school, a slip alignment. The total cost for these project is estimated to be the twenty-three million five hundred and twenty-seven dollars. This base project does not exceed the district's maximum budget of the twenty-five million seven hundred and forty-one dollars. And there is an attachment, so we can continue that discussion from the committee of the whole, if there's any further comments. Yeah, I think that that's totally appropriate if we wanted to kind of do the, um, round robin and get, get feedback to see, um, everyone's comfort levels.
And I would just add, if there's something that you as an individual board member would like to see added as an add, uh, alternative, I think Melissa has pricing for what that item would cost for us to, to do the design work necessary to include it in the bid.
Discussing.
DeLong, can you pull up the project attachment, please?
If anyone needs a hard copy, I'm.
Yeah, I have mine too.
There's, there's any board members that may need a hard copy, I have.
Bring mine with me. Okay, still have mine. Just to have it, thank you.
We've worked with the association to kinda ask those folks to kind of give us more of an indication, but they're not required to do that for some time, which, you know makes
I'm not asking for exact, I just like, I'd just be comfortable, got a better idea of what
Sure. Mr. Scott, I would maybe ask, you know, what base project, if anything, are you willing to support? If it's nothing, you know, that's informative.
On this, on this sheet?
If it's asset protection only, that's one thing. If it's lean-based project, that's another option. If it's the lean-based project and you wanted, you know, you wanna get a price for the bleachers or the, you know, the design part for the bleachers, you know, we just kinda, kinda know, need to know where everybody is.
The bottom part?
So, the bottom part is just the things that you may want to get additional, what additional design fees would be incurred if we included that as an add alternate in the bid. So, I would draw your attention, you know, if you look in the middle section, asset protection, that's the, you know, that's the seven to, you know, nine, 8.9 million dollars that goes with the item that just went before, you know. So, each one of these components is a thing, and even within, you know, the high school project itself, if there are other things that you're not able to support now that would theoretically reduce the costs, you know, we would like to maybe hear that.
You tell me the vac needs done, so I'm cool with that. Let you go switch words and that, probably 1912.
Mr. Scott, can you speak into your microphone, please?
You can't hear me?
No, sir.
We've got a fan behind us.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm, I guess, A.J., I'm comfortable with that. I'm comfortable with everything, so.
Okay, so, base bid, is there anything on that list, sir, that you would like to get an idea that if it comes back within budget, you know, is there anything else you want explored to get a cost, knowing that EI and SiteLogic, you know, mostly EI is going to, you know, do that design work, which is gonna incur some cost?
I guess, my only question, for me, I guess, looking down at things, site work, the parent loop.
Yes.
It's, I mean, you say it's safety, we want it there for safety.
It's really hard to hear you, Mr. Scott, I'm sorry.
Ding.
When you get close to the mic, it's easier.
Okay. The loop, is that, we're gonna put that in for safety reasons, is that the only reason?
Well, I don't know, safety's one of them, you know, I think, you know, Mr. Bard talked about some concerns around that. The idea is to make our afternoon dismissal more safe and more efficient and allow us to put traffic in a different spot that doesn't make the Park Place intersection so congested and difficult to navigate, which causes traffic to back up on Molly Pitcher Highway. You know, it also gives us a much longer, I would characterize it as a much longer kind of stacking area, which is gonna take that traffic off of Everly and Park Place, which, you know, is not gonna mitigate getting those cars out again, but at least we won't be using the Park Place, Everly School as much, because that's where a lot of kids do walk. As they walk back into the borough, that becomes a very, you know, convoluted spot. So, that bus loop is about safety, it is also about efficiency of getting our evening, our afternoon and morning, you know, bus, bus traffic through as efficiently as possible.
That'd be my only problem, the bus, that bus loop. People drive their cars to school when the kids can walk. We pay buses, and they're gonna drive the bus. That's the only kick I have.
So, are you indicating that you'd like to remove that?
Yes.
Okay.
Other than that, I'm all right.
Mr. Scott, you are also aware that we are going to get a grant for that as well?
Partial grant.
We may, we may get the grant.
So, we will know on the 16th?
Yeah.
And so, by the time this comes to vote, Scott, we are hopeful that we will know what
Yeah, I was saying, she said everything gonna be 16th, that's when everything should bust open.
Right.
Most of things will, but not
Yeah, we haven't, now, DCED, who administered Multi-Modal Transportation Fund, we know they will sometimes move dates or push an award date. We haven't necessarily heard anything yet from them, but that's not to say they couldn't postpone that award until next month, so I will keep
Does that make a difference for you, Mr. Scott, if we get a significant grant money? Would you be willing to support that?
I might be, maybe the money is about $2 million for convenience of people driving to pick up their kids.
I would just, maybe if I could just maybe flesh that out a little bit. It's more for our convenience to get kids in and out safely, you know, because, you know, to your point, there are folks who drive their kids to school, but it's really about improving the efficiency of how we do that. You know, it's not just for them, it is, it definitely has value to the district in that we can get buses in and out faster.
Are we doing that now?
Not as well as we could. You know, there's a lot of moving parts to that, and when they come around and go down to the park, you know, that's where it gets dicey. And we'd be moving, we'd be moving that further up Everly Road to minimize that at that intersection. Perhaps, to Mr. Bard's point, creating, you know, a different problem at a place, but we'd have far fewer walkers, you know, at that end of Everly, to my mind.
And the middle school parent pickup is a nightmare.
Take a bus.
Parent, it's kinda like one way there, like
Take a bus.
And then the vans are out front to pick up the special ed.
So, all of it helps improve that efficiency, Fred?
Okay. I'm still, I still have my reservation. I got to the 16th and flesh it out, right?
So, just Fred, to be clear.
Yes.
If we were to get a grant that reduced that number, you would be in favor of it? Or are you talking about pulling that out of the project completely?
Depending on what, I'm, if we get the grant, yeah, I'll go along.
Okay.
I don't wanna hold up everything else.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Carey?
I definitely would agree with the asset protection. I don't know why we wouldn't wait to see, you said possibly by the 16th, we know, and the grant monies, so, I mean, I'm not sure why we're in to make a decision on that if we are gonna find out the next week or two to know about the loop.
So, the decision doesn't come tonight, it does come on the 22nd.
Okay.
So, we will know that, and that's the timing of that, as long as the state plays ball and does, you know, keeps their timeline, we should have that information, Mr. Carey.
I would have probably approved most of the things on the top half. At this point, I wouldn't on the bottom. I'm not sure we have a lot of money extra to
Okay, so, understood. So, base project?
Annitatively, yes.
Annative base project.
Mr. Kressler?
So, just to verify that, the parent loop there, the 2.4 or whatever, if we get awarded a grant, that takes away like 1.3, like that is the total cost, not, that's counting, that's not accounting for us getting
Right, we did not build, we did not build that into the budget. That is bonus money.
Absolutely.
Which, that definitely could be moved over to save a position.
Yeah, so, I'm actually really comfortable, after some conversations, even about, like I had some reservations about not having that middle school, small group instruction, which of course carries a hefty price tag, but I'm okay with where we're at, with everything that's there. It'd be great to get that grant and get a little extra money back. I guess the only thing, if I was looking at the bottom, the two things that kind of stand out to me is possible, but I also understand realistically, very not likely, but would be, we discussed last week about, you know, auxiliary, auxiliary gym down there and like figuring out, like, can we do, maximize some space or use as whatever. And then the other one would be the high school gym bleachers in the main gym. I do know, like, they are dated, and I think are even, even as much to say is like, it would be probably a big help to some of our custodial staff if they had something that was more in line with today's technology, because there's a whole lot of work that can go into taking those up, taking those down, but, you know.
Just interrupt you for a second, sir. Melissa, do you have a cost for what the design, to find out if, to be able to put that in, the project?
The floor?
No, the bleachers.
Sorry, yes, and I'm just trying to find it on my list, and, so, yes. So, the added cost, so we have the construction cost, the $369,000 construction cost, the additional cost for your design professionals, so that's architect, electrical, everything else that goes into it is an additional $20,715. That would be added to the soft cost number, which will now start to come down if the lean base project is selected. So, there's a little bit of leveling out.
But, yeah, overall, I'm very comfortable with everything on the top.
Mr. Bard?
Oh, as much as I'd like to do it all, I know we can't. As far as the bottom, nothing really, other than the wall crack. What's that wall crack for? What's, what's that all about?
It's in the pool?
Yeah, it's, so, to be clear, it is not in the pool, okay? It is the exterior wall of the nadatorium. There's a horizontal crack that has started, it's been, I think, on this list for several years. It's not necessarily growing, the wall's not necessarily, necessarily shifting. I think there have been temporary measures put in place previously to try to remediate it. Those have failed over time because they are temporary. This is the recommendation for more permanent fix, which would be, which would include a little bit more structural adjustments to that exterior wall. We can look at that in more detail if you'd like. I can give you some photographs and give you a little bit more history if you'd like.
Is there, can you do the cost for that additional?
Yes. That would be an additional $14,840 in professional services fees.
It was what?
Professional services, so that's your architectural, that's your structural, and any additional design work that has
What was the cost, again?
$14,840.
So, it's leaking now?
It is not leaking. Again, this is not in the pool. This is the exterior nadatorium. It's the exterior wall of the
Like an exterior wall?
Of the building, correct, right. Yeah, so, the pool is not leaking, this pool is sound, it is just the exterior wall of the nadatorium.
I don't think anything for the bottom. That parent loop still got me a little bit confused. I just don't see why we're moving a problem from down Park Place up to road. I just, I got issues with that, that's just me. We get a grant, that's, you know, it's gonna be cheaper, but we're still moving that problem. We're not fixing it. All we're doing is moving it from this place to that place. I don't know what the answer is, you know, maybe it's rerouting something to where we're at now, you know, I don't know that. But, other than that, I'm okay with everything we wanna talk.
Thank you. Dr. Goetz?
Well, I'm glad that Jim brought up the crack wall, or the wall crack, because I was curious about that, too, and I, I don't know, it just seems like a puzzle that that's not included in, like, asset protection, because based on your description, it sounds like it's the kinda thing that if you ignore for another 10 years, then the cost may be considerably more to fix it. Am I wrong?
Not necessarily. And I will state, asset protection, similar to the lean base, what we had done is we had taken that whole list. Asset protection was obviously much more inclusive of the scopes of work that are, you know, below the line, so to speak. In Mr. August's administrative recommendation, he kind of really narrowed his focus, and we did the same thing with the asset protection. We looked at that list of projects under asset protection, and we said, what is absolutely necessary for this building to continue functioning properly? At SiteLogic, we focus on three things, warm, safe, dry. What is gonna make this building warm, safe, and dry for the next 20 years? And what we did was come up with the modified HVAC and electrical scope that you see currently under asset protection. So, anything that is listed below the line, it was one of those items that the district could take on either in a phased approach, like the windows, or something that maybe could be taken on independently as a one-off, or could be incorporated as an alternate as part of the project.
And I guess that makes sense, because that could be taken on at some point in the future if we decided that we need to. Same with the auxiliary gymnasium floor, I really, I mean, I don't understand, I mean, I didn't go to this high school, so I don't really have as good ideas, some of you, about like the day-to-day sort of operations and how spaces are used, but it seems like that space is underutilized and with some minimum, minimal investment could be better utilized, but I guess that's also something that could just happen later, independent of this project, so it doesn't necessarily need to be in the project. You know, looking at the top, I don't know, I mean, I, I guess you had a lot of these conversations on Thursday, but it was sort of hard for me to follow at the time. You know, sell me on the, sell me on the concession cafeteria business, like, are these just kinda upgrades, or is this like, wow, we've got like a broken lunch situation and we gotta fix it?
So, that space, currently, to sell concessions, we pull out tables, and it's a little rough. Having a dedicated concession area for sporting events would be something that I think our boosters would very much appreciate, and I think it's important to understand that most of this project is going to be invisible to the eye, okay? So, we're spending a lot of money, and it's going to be difficult for people to see it. My reason for including this space was that when you walk into the high school, you know, what impression do we wanna give to the people who are coming in and the students that live and learn there? And an upgraded collaborative space that can, you know, be used both for lunch, but also could be a place where teachers could bring their class down, or classes could be combined, much like the, I think, the ethos that we have at the middle school part with the furniture that we put in there to allow, you know, that space to be used differently by different groups at different times. So, there's the furniture part of it, which we will need to carefully, you know, consider. And then, you know, having that concession spot is kind of a nod to the, you know, the needs of our athletic patrons, and, you know, so that, to answer your question more directly, my goal as superintendent is when a kid walks into or a visiting just kind of upgrades, or is this like, wow, we've got like a broken lunch situation and we gotta fix it?
So, the, that space, currently to sell concessions, we pull out tables, um, and it's a little rough. Um, having a dedicated concession area, um, for sporting events would be something that I think our boosters would very much appreciate, um, and, and I think it's important to understand that most of this project is going to be invisible to the, the eye, okay? So we're spending a lot of money, um, and it's going to be difficult for people to see it. Um, my reason for including this space was that when you walk into the high school, you know, what impression do we want to give to the people who are coming in and the students that, that live and learn there? And an upgraded collaborative space that can, you know, be used both for lunch, but also could be a place where teachers could bring their class down, or classes could be combined, much like the, the, I think the ethos that we have at the middle school part with the furniture that we put in there to allow, uh, you know, that space to be used differently by different groups at different times. So there's the furniture part of it, um, which we will need to carefully, uh, you know, consider. Um, and then, you know, having that, that concession spot is a kind of a nod to, to the, you know, the needs of, of our athletic patrons, um, and, and, you know. Yeah, so, so that, the, the, to answer your question more directly, my goal as superintendent is when a kid walks into, or a visiting student walks into our high school, they go, this, this seems like a great place to go to school. Um, so some of it is aesthetic, but underneath that is the, the ability for us to use that space collaboratively, you know, in a variety of different ways. So there's a wow factor and a, you know, a now factor.
So speaking of aesthetics, then that, I guess that brings me to the rear secure vestibule, so I understand that the security needs there, and, um, in my earlier comments, it was my understanding that there was gonna be like a, you know, a counseling suite there, but maybe that's an old plan that has been discarded, um, because I'm not seeing that listed on that third item.
You, you are correct, during the, the design process, you know, as we were trying to get closer to the budget number, you know, we did have to shrink those spaces and make some, some pretty, you know, drastic redesigns, some of those things fell off. Um, there is still a space for two, um, small group, uh, meeting instruction rooms that, that we were able to preserve through that design process. So not, not the additional guy, you know, counseling suite area, but, but we did preserve some space for, for those types of meetings to take place.
And then please just remind me where the two flex conference rooms go, are those new additions, or is that a reconfiguring of space?
Those are two new additions, and those are the, uh, that's a little bit of that, um, design development process, that the, the counseling suites, which was, you know, office and small group instruction, kind of flexible spaces, that these two smaller conference areas have now kind of supplanted that, and that's what, um.
So that's sort of part of the family consumer science nursery room, rear secure vestibule, it's all kind of in that same.
Yeah, it's all kind of one addition, yep, and as far as economy of scale, you know, bang for your buck, that, that's.
Well, and that's one of the thoughts in my head, is this economy is of scale, and, and so then the STEM robotics lab and tech classroom, is that also part of that area, or is that someplace else?
That is, so that's separate, and they're broken out separately. Um, you, you know, the desire and the program goals, uh, from the board when they did their walkthrough uh, over a year ago, when they identified the goals that they'd like to see, it was kind of building out the STEM, uh, program within the high school. And, uh, the design evolved to provide a STEM, um, electronics robotics lab, and then a typical STEM kind of science classroom. And so now what we've done is, um, as a way to, you know, provide options and flexibility within the budget is kind of break those two areas apart and say, um, the STEM robotics and kind of tech classroom as one addition, and then later if the district would like to, you can, or the back of the building would be your nursery slash daycare, family consumer science, STEM robotics, and STEM science classroom, and then you would have two, um, conference rooms that, that would also be supported by that rear secure vestibule.
So I guess, um, in, in my mind, I mean, the, the high sc, I mean, you know, Mr. August, I think you put it this way, we, we've already given the middle school a lot of love, and as much as I would love that band room addition down there, that million dollars, I'd, I don't know, if I were to cut something, I think that, that I might cut the middle school. Um, and not necessarily the parent loop, cause I think that's pretty important, but the, um, as, as long as we can get it in a reasonable place budget-wise, um, because I, because I feel like, I don't know, it feels like a lot, and I, 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 I would like to pare it back a little bit, and if I was going to pare it back, my paring back place would be the middle school band room. I mean, those administrative offices, I think that has to be done, but that's not very expensive, and there's not really an economy of scale there. Um, but the high school building additions, um, seem, seem pretty important, uh, and needed, uh, and, um, and I can see sort of real value in those for the long term, so I think that's where I am. I think that if I were, if, if two options were placed in front of me, one, uh, with the band room addition and one without, this is the middle school band addition, one with it and one without it, I would choose the one without it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, um, I wanted to thank Mr. August and, uh, Mr. Barnhart for taking time out of their evening Friday to, uh, show me the facility so I can have a better understanding of what we're dealing with here. Um, go through this here quickly, the, for the middle school area, the admin office, I'm, I'm definitely okay with that, it's a, it's a smaller amount of money, and it, it seems to create a secondary level of security, if I'm understanding that correctly, or.
Uh, it's, it's, the security's in place, it's more reconfiguration to allow, you know, to, that space to be used more effectively, it's kind of crowded and not, we're, we're not using some space that we could be, this would allow us to, to shift things out, and rather than have kids sitting, or parents sitting in chairs in hallways, we would have a dedicated space for that.
Okay, and then I don't know, I'm probably past this point, but I'm still looking at the, the middle school, um, band room, what, the, the new building is gonna be eighteen hundred square feet, what's the current square footage, the current middle school band room, do we know that?
Uh, it's actually not a band room, it's a repurposed room that the band is in right now. I don't, I, I mean, it's obviously less than that, I wouldn't say it's, um, maybe not quite half, but I will follow up on that for you and get the square footage.
I'm just, I'm looking at the over, overview map here, and I don't know what costs are and stuff like that, but I'm still looking at this to where you, you knock that wall out and bring it flush with the auditorium. To me, that looks like you're gonna get a very similar square footage of what this new build is gonna be. Is that a way that we can potentially maybe still get this little bit more storage room for the music room without spending, is it like a million for that?
I mean, it certainly, uh, could be explored with the architect. Uh, I did, I, what is always difficult to imagine when you're looking, you know, bird's eye view at a floor plan, is that there's actually a significant change in elevation, uh, for the middle school, so we're actually kind of building up the new band room addition to the current, uh, level of the floor, so while on plan, we might just be able to kind of like knock a wall out to expand something, there might be some elevation, uh, issues that we have to contend with, which is why the location of the current new addition is placed where it is, but I can have Adam and EI follow up with you on, you know, if they had explored that as an option, and why or why not it didn't make sense.
And I would just like to point out, you know, that we have several programs that, that use that space overlapping, you know, orchestra, band, chorus, you know, it's all in that space, you know, when you create another space, then scheduling kind of loosens up, you know, cause those things can drive schedules, cause, you know, you need to have them so, so often, you know, and, and not being able to have them simultaneously, you know, can sometimes be a challenge, I think, you know, Mrs. DeLong can speak to that as a former middle school principal.
Yeah, the same with the small group, uh, settings here, like the flexible classrooms and the flexible small group instructions and two classroom spaces.
At the middle school, sir?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Yeah, those aren't included in the basement unless you're, you're talking alternates.
Right, well, so potentially I was looking if the music ordeal that I laid out would work, and we were able to save some money, which may or may not happen, um, maybe that frees up some cost to either save that money, or, um, instead of doing four small group instructions and two small classrooms, maybe one office, one, you know, one classroom, like half of that, if that makes sense, I would, I would believe that would probably be half the cost if we're doing half, half of that build.
Uh, yes and no, here's one thing that I would like to remind this board, anytime they're considering uh, construction, especially within courtyards, this facility's have a lot of courtyards, right? It's just how they were added on to, they introduced a courtyard, and then as a way to bring natural light into existing exterior walls. Um, any consideration to build inside of a courtyard that is surrounded by the facility is going to be more expensive than just adding on to the exterior of the building. Here's why, you are asking for the labor costs associated with that, it's a lot of manual labor, okay, because we have to now navigate through your building, what does that mean? It's not just someone pushing a cart through, you know, from the front door to the courtyard, it is us laying down floor protection, it is us protecting all of the surfaces that we will have to cart the materials through. Um, if we were building on the exterior of your facility, we could just kind of drop the materials where they are and then start building. Here, we have to drop the materials and then transport the materials through your facility. That is why the cost to build within those courtyards is very expensive, that's why there's a million dollar line item for those middle school, small group instruction spaces, because it's expensive to build there. Now, we do understand, there are critical adjacencies whenever we consider programming within a building, that means is, when you are looking at adding spaces, classroom space to your district, programming is how you are assigning those, the function of those spaces, and sometimes you have to build in a place that makes sense because of how your building is programmed. That's something to consider as well, but that was part of the reason why the middle school additions did not make it into, um, I think the administrative recommendation.
Okay, um, I guess moving on to the high school portion of it, uh, looking at the nursery room, the family consumer science, and the, uh, conference area and faculty lounge, um, looking at the current nursery room and consumer science room, I saw a lot of outdated things there, so another way to save some money possibly is to upgrade the current room as is, putting new, new appliances, um, maybe working with that area versus building a whole new, uh, building, seeing what the cost savings could be there, and potentially eliminating like those, those three conference areas and faculty lounge, potentially.
Uh, Mr. Donovan, I just want to clarify, the faculty lounge, or the faculty break room and that, uh, conference area, that goes along with the, um, gymnasium renovation, uh, just because of where it's located, if the gymnasium expansion was undertaken or considered, it would be the gymnasium, the toilet, and the faculty, uh, break room and conference area. Those are kind of interconnected.
Yeah, sorry, I'm looking at it on the same page here.
I, I know, thank you.
All right, um, I, I would like to see the, the STEM classrooms, actually somehow if we could get both of those, the robotics lab and the science lab, I, I think that's something, um, sounds like a lot of hands-on stuff, which I think kids need these days. Um, I'm told that there's possibly some grant money available for these as well, so we could look into potentially doing that. And the commons area at the high school, I, it's not really a practical thing, but it, it would be something for the kids, um, a little more inviting when they walk in, they see something that, um, they can, they can use and, and creates a, a nicer atmosphere for them. I think there is some validity to the environment that you're in, day in and day out. Uh, and as far as the parent loop, I mean, I'm, I'm hearing what Jim is saying here, to pay, I think it's, all these papers. Looking at two, four, and then seven hundred eighty thousand for the sidewalk, it's like three, three point two, if we get the grant, knocks it down to like two, one, and we're gonna pay two million dollars to not fix the problem, but basically move it down the road a little bit. Um, that's, that's tough for me to, to get on board with that, I, I would encourage maybe us finding a better solution to, to pay that kind of money, that's my, my intake on that.
I just, uh, wanted to clarify on that, Mr. Donovan, the parent loop is estimated at about two point four, the three point two number, that includes the site work for the building addition, so that was an all-inclusive number.
Okay. And, and just historically, to be accurate with the loop, we did design a loop that was more expansive, it was three point five, and the board at that time decided not to move forward with that project, so, you know, there was a solution, like a, I'll say better solution on the table, it just was kind of out of our price range at that time, so we, that's, that's how we landed here, it was a modified version of that, you know, better, better option.
Yeah, and I would say, um, as far as the asset protection, I feel like that's, that's something I'm definitely on board with, um, I mean, we also have to consider, um, Mrs. Wolfinger said about it, the elementary school needs, uh, we're looking at three million dollars for two buildings, and one of which is gonna need a roof replacement next year at a million dollars, so we're already at two million dollars, that's a million dollars a building. I don't think that is gonna get us much at all, so I hope we can keep that in mind.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Nagle?
We need our, everything on there, problem is I think choosing right now is premature, because I don't see a budget that shows, gets me to a balanced budget. I'd like administration to actually give me that, pen that budget out, and then maybe we can choose a little bit more wisely, um, so I'm gonna, we need a lot of these things, so, that's it.
Thank you, um, so on Thursday I had shared my thoughts, I support everything on the lean base list, um, with that two point two million dollar buffer, however, I did also mention some add-ons, which I do still support, which Mr. Kressler had noted those, and I still agree with those, which take us to that one point eight buffer.
Just to be clear, that we're talking bleachers and?
And, and the auxiliary gym floor replacement, um, not like item to like item, but do like possibly some sort of rubber floor, um, that would be more economic friendly and a little more kid-friendly, because moving chairs, tables, and if they would have gym equipment, you know, um, hardwood floor, I don't, I don't know, kids in hardwood floor, um, is not always a good decision, but I think that it would be a, a place for engagement and to utilize the space, cause currently I just feel like it's a little bit of a dead space and underutilized, so whether if we do that now or plan to do that project later, I could definitely support, um, you know, giving, giving the gym a little bit of a facelift along with the other items on the lean base.
Is there a cost for the, like a design cost for the floor, Melissa?
Uh, yes, there is, um, Mrs. Everly, last week you had asked what, if we could update the number to reflect, um, some sort of rubberized boards flooring, uh, that cost is actually going to increase, uh, based on that selection, and here's why, that auxiliary gym floor is actually four inches below, um, kind of level, so replacing the floor would mean we would have to kind of address the subfloor to bring it up, uh, create the necessary subfloor to, uh, receive the rubberized boards flooring, so it is an even greater additional cost than replacing it, uh, in kind with what you're seeing here.
So would even like a, like an LVT, like click floor, or like some sort of industrial?
So, I mean, we could certainly look at a cost for an LVT, I, I think what we would really have to identify is the purpose of the auxiliary gym, because then you would have to select an appropriate flooring for, uh, how you would use the space.
I mean, that's something maybe we could explore down the road, maybe in-house, um, I mean, it would be great, of course, you know, to have some of these other items, another item like to keep an eye on is Mr. August had mentioned, was to remove and replace the thirty-one unit ventilators in the classrooms, um, they're ancient, it's gonna be a matter of time, like, before they kind of just take a dump on us and we're going to have to.
Yeah, those are currently on the list because those are actually, um, difficult for the maintenance staff to maintain, right now, the feedback that we've received consistently is that, um, it's not that they're difficult to maintain just because, uh, it's not that they're difficult to maintain just because they're failing. What's difficult to maintain is finding the appropriate pieces and parts for them. They're just not necessarily readily available for replacement pieces on the market because the systems are out of date. What we are doing is working with facility staff to try to see what an appropriate phase solution for either replacement or repairing or even an alternate approach for that could be. And that's just a part of the conversation because that would be kind of under the GISA asset protection. We have a little bit more flexibility with how we can navigate that scope.
Would there be a cost? What would be the engineering cost on that, Melissa?
That unit, I'm sorry, the engineering cost for that is about forty thousand dollars. Because it's so heavily, it's both your mechanical and your electrical engineers with your architectural and commissioning.
Well, I mean, it's definitely something to keep an eye on, but for the sake of, you know, what I can support undoubtedly is the base, the lean base plan.
Okay, so just so I have my marching orders, is there anything from what we've discussed that we should pursue as? You know, so by my math, it seems like we have a majority that would support the base bid at this point, you know, which is what's on the agenda as the discussion item. I guess my question is, do I need to refine anything or put another agenda item on that has alternatives on it? Or should we just stick with what's there?
Like I said, the loop, if we don't get the grant, then I got a problem with them spending that kind of money. Other than that, I'm.
Okay. So I'm not hearing anybody saying we should alter the agenda item for next meeting? Okay.
All right. Good job, guys. Great discussion.
Well, I'm sorry, I had to think on that for a second. I mean, I share some of Fred and Jim's reservations about the parent loop a little bit. And I think it's really important, but I don't know. Maybe that's a separate agenda item in my opinion, like it's a separate vote, but. I mean, I, I don't know. Just thinking out loud because it was under pressure to say something before we moved on.
Sure.
But that's just my thought.
I would just encourage board members when we get to that, you know, if that's something, we can certainly amend what's there. Or if I get direction to add it without the parent loop, I can do that as well.
All right, moving on to the last portion of the citizens' comments. This is for non-agenda items. So it looks like we have two. Jonathan Triplet. So please just identify yourself by name and address. All comments to the board as a whole and make sure they are in the form of a statement. Questions will be taken under advisement. Responses to questions will be offered after due deliberation and will be provided by the superintendent at the direction of the board within a few days of the board meeting. You're allowed three minutes for your comments. Comments relative to private matter, student matters or personnel issues should be directed to the appropriate school authority outside of this meeting. The presiding officer reserves the right to interrupt or terminate a participant's statement when this statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me? Okay. So, good evening. My name is Jonathan Triplet. And I reside within the Schipensburg area school district. I have two daughters that have graduated from Schipensburg High School and have one daughter currently attending high school. I want to first to thank all the school district board members for volunteering your time and putting the best interest of our students first. I know what it is to be a volunteer board member. It's a very difficult job and you got to put in difficult situations. You got to get, you have to make really difficult decisions. The reason why I'm here today is to address my concern on why we continue to have a high turnover rate of coaches within our athletic department. I have a few topics I would like to discuss. First one is the hiring process. In January twenty twenty-three, I applied for the, I was interviewed for the JV assistant coaching position. Board members consisted of the varsity head coach, assistant coach, JV head coach. I was surprised that there was no representation from our athletic department in that process. During my interview, I was never asked a single question regarding my softball knowledge. I would ask some of the following questions. What's your strengths and weaknesses? How do you handle female drama? And how do you handle parent conflict? Which are vital questions during the interview process. Instead, we should have been asking, what's your? Instead, we need to be asking, what's your strategy on establishing a batting lineup and why? What's your strategy on bunting coverage? Draw me a diagram on how to execute it. What's your strategy on defense? Have you read our student athlete handbook? Do you agree or disagree with it? When applicant wants to apply for a coaching position within the district, where do they go to find out the qualifications and requirements for that coaching position? The only positions right now within frontline education that list job requirements and qualifications are those for school positions, i.e. like teachers, superintendents, or cooks. But every single position within the athletic department does not list any qualification or requirements. But how is an applicant supposed to know if they're even qualified when they go to apply? We can't even list the basic qualification or requirements on the school website. Who here is responsible and validating that all applicants who apply and are found to be qualified are offered an interview? I know for a fact qualified applicants have applied for coaching positions within the district. And some of them have even been employed, but not even offered a job interview. How does this happen? I personally, a person that was hired in January twenty-three, this last softball season, is no longer on the staff. Our JV softball head coach from this past season went twelve and four, stepped down. How do we allow a successful coaching staff to step down from our school district?
Mr. Triplet, if you could just wrap up your comments.
Am I able to get an extension?
Say again?
Am I able to request an extension?
That would be for the board president to decide.
How much longer do you?
I can get a couple more minutes. We owe it to our student athletes to ensure that we are hiring the most qualified head coaches that will continuously improve our athletic program and do what's best for the student athlete. Applicants who apply for head coaching positions need to have either assistant coaching experience at a competitive level with proven results or competitive head coaching experience. Applicants applying for assistant coaching positions need to have recreational or competitive experience at a minimum. By allowing this, a head coach can mentor the assistant coach to prepare them to take on the next responsibility of head coach. There's a lot more that I want to say here, but there's two more topics I want to talk about. Basketball sports scheduling. What is the benefit, what benefit do students get as student athletes when all the boys and high school girls' games are on the same day? I cannot think of a single benefit that we get out of scheduling all the games on one day. I can think of a lot of disadvantages. Lack of attendance at our home and away games. Lack of student sections attendance cheering on our friends. Parents who have a son or daughter that participates with activities now they got to pick which skin that they got to go to. Inability to have three referees at a game. There have been so many games this year that attended where we had to have two referees because we forced it on them to have five games on one night versus spreading it over a week. Here's another one. Guess how many high school games are being played this year on Friday night for girls? Zero. Guess how many high school games are being played at home this year on Friday night for boys? Six. Again, how does this happen? In closing, I want to make it very clear. We have some great coaching that are doing a great job within our student athletes, but there's always room for self-evaluation and improvement. We need to improve our hiring process and ensure that we are hiring the best candidate, regardless if their son or daughter is playing on the team. We need to ensure that all qualified applicants are being interviewed, especially those that are employed with the district. The athletic department needs to be, needs to attend interviews. And maybe somebody within the school board can also be a part of that process. Need to ensure that we interview encompasses philosophies and ideas and that the applicant can clearly demonstrate their knowledge of the sport. Gab openings need to list qualification and requirements for applying.
Mr. Triplet, I do need you to wrap it up, please. Thank you. So thank you for your comments. We will have this added to the upcoming athletic committee agenda that is coming up. Mr. Vard, you're on that committee, correct?
Yep.
Can you ensure that that gets on the agenda, please? Next up, Mr. Scheffler.
Thank you. My name's Dustin Scheffler. I live at one twenty-eight Cumberland, Schipensburg School District. Thanks for giving me a couple minutes. I have similar issues that Mr. Triplet had that I come here tonight. I also interviewed for that position last year and had nobody from the athletic department in on that. Second issue that I'm having here that I wanted to bring to the attention is, I'm pretty sure that the school does not have a no-parent coach policy. Is that correct?
We don't, Ms.
We do not.
We do not. We have several.
Okay. Well, so then, is it okay for one sports platform to have coaches and stuff, say there can be no-parent coaches at all, volunteer coaches or anything?
So if you could just continue your.
Okay. So that's the question that I need to get answered because, and that's what kind of brought us here tonight, was because we see that there's some approvals coming down the line here. And we've been told that no-parent coaches are allowed in some of these programs. It stopped us from exploring some opportunities here. Now to see that whoever was making those decisions has flipped on that. Nobody would, you know. So volunteers and things of that nature, how are we getting a fair shake? How is everybody getting a fair shake for that? And we're not just hiring our friends or, you know, people that we're comfortable with. There's other qualified people out there. So they're kind of the answers I'm looking for. Like if this is a policy we're allowing, you know, then make it a policy. But if it's not, then it's got to be fair for everybody, not just because I know somebody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scheffler, for your time. Mr. August will be in contact with you and the athletics committee will discuss that in the upcoming meeting. Any other comments, Mrs. Wolfinger?
I just wanted to say to Mr. Donovan, thank you very much for going and visiting the buildings. I think it's a key thing that all school board members, if you have not done that, to inform yourselves, I would implore you to do that. I think, you know, back in my day, like a year and a half ago, it was one of the first things that I did. And, you know, it's pretty eye-opening when you walk into any of those facilities to see what you're getting ready to potentially vote on. I don't think it's appropriate to make a decision if you haven't laid eyes on it. As far as the middle school loop, I think, again, this is a place where I would ask board members to potentially go during dismissal time at the middle school and observe with your own eyes why that is absolutely critical that it gets done. It's really not about the traffic as much as it is the safety of our students that walk a mile home. Yes, I agree, there is probably going to be some traffic issues, you know, no matter where it is, whether it's at Park Place or down on Row Road. The difference is the kids are not walking on Row Road and they are at Park Place. So all of that traffic on that side of the building will be shut off and kids will be able to safely walk from the middle school through Park Place and not have to kind of interact with cars. So in my opinion, it's a huge safety concern that has to be addressed. And the other thing is, as far as the band room goes at the middle school, that band room, I would see as a, I think the middle school projects and wrapping that piece up are essential. And I think that the middle school band room is essential. Again, it goes back to, you know, go and when they have a full band or orchestra happening and witness for yourself the space conditions that these kids are under. They literally are side by side. There is no breathing room in that room. You have, on average, about eighty to eighty-five kids in that room at one time trying to play instruments. And we have a huge percussion section now, which, you know, dominates that room. And so that is something that needs to be considered because our program is exploding from sixth through eighth grade right now. And so space is of utmost importance. What I was referring to earlier, that as far as the high school program, I think it's important to know that the music addition that's on the kind of scheduled plans is not a band room. That is music. It's not a band room. Because if I had my choice, I would say also that the band room in the high school is not appropriate size for our band, which is going to be over two hundred students within the next two to three years. Again, if you go in there right now with having ninety students in our high school band room, again, they're wall-to-wall. So just final comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I feel like we've discussed a whole lot. Real quick, board comments, Mr. Scott?
I have, I only got one. I'll make it short. We talked about administration, teachers, and everything else. But my concern is maintenance and people working out at Red Barn up there in the winter, with that snow and everything, they're dealing with equipment out on the side. I think we need to look into providing them a safe environment to work at for the school district. That barn does provide heating heat by a portage on for a need. And the rest of the stuff, I think we need to look at doing some kind of plan or program to provide them a decent place.
Mr. Carey?
Oh, ma'am.
Mr. Kressler?
I'll be as quick as I can. Just a little historical look, or small historical look back. My first ever budget and finance committee meeting, which would have been in the January of two thousand twenty-two, two years ago now. First one I ever looked at showed a deficit of like two point five million. I was in shock, obviously, like I'm like, oh, my goodness. But some of our, I called them grizzled, grizzled season board members at the time. Want me to calm down? Don't worry about it. It's all going to work itself out. So that year, we ended up using about one point five million dollars when we closed that, like to vote on that budget. We spent about one point five million from our fund balance that left us just over ten million, I believe, at that point. Tonight, Kristy wasn't sure because that's, you know, I feel like that's an ever-fluctuating, you know, thing. But, you know, we were at least at twelve. She said closer to fifteen, I think I heard her say, but don't quote me. So I look back and think like we've grown our fund balance by a substantial amount while still using our fund balance to kind of offset our budget. So I don't, I don't get scared about the whole thing. I mean, I totally think that we have to be reasonable in looking at everything and not going way, way, way above or outside of our means. But I don't, you know, I think Kristy does, and her team do a tremendous job of budgeting things very conservatively as well. That allows us to end up being successful in the end. The SRO, Steph mentioned it earlier, the SRO bill that's in Senate or House, I don't remember. I love the idea of it. What I would love to see then is those same people get together and vote to pay for the funding for all of that because I will totally always be supportive of putting myself, only speaking for myself, but an armed security guard or police officer, I should say, in every single building across not just Schipensburg, but every single academic institution in our state. If that's what they want to do and mandate that, that's wonderful. But then put the money behind it as well, rather than sticking it back on a local board like us. Now I'm done with all the negative stuff or whatever. Board comment. Middle school and high school wrestling competed in Trojan Wars over the Christmas break. It's a great experience for them. It is one of the biggest and most competitive wrestling tournaments in the state. We didn't have any kids, I don't think, medal there, but again, extremely tough. I think there's maybe six or seven states who send kids here. It's a good experience for those kids, though. Boys' basketball got a win, boys' and girls' basketball got wins last week against James Buchanan. Tomorrow night, the girls are at home. It is actually SAA night, so if you're listening out there and you have a young daughter who plays basketball in the Schipensburg, in the SAA basketball league, they wear their jersey and come with a paying adult. They get in for free tomorrow night. They do, they get like honored or they're on the court a little bit during like pre-game introductions. It's always cool. And then in turn with that, the boys are having their SAA night on Friday against Big Spring, like those people up the road to the north. So same thing, if you're a young gentleman in SAA, throw on your jersey, come with a paying parent or a grandparent, and you get some, you know, on-the-court varsity time there in pre-game. Finally, swimming and diving last week. It looks like the girls beat Gettysburg ninety-three, eighty-seven. I think we were tied heading to the last relay. tied heading to the last relay, and I know absolutely nothing about swimming and diving, but we were tied heading to the last relay. We ended up winning it by roughly a minute. So they got a win. And then the boys, though, did suffer a loss to Gettysburg. But from what I've been told by people who do know something about swimming and diving is they have a really good wrestler, or swimming and diving team. Other than that, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bard?
Short comment. I just want to make it clear. I'm not against the parent loop. I'm against just not fixing a problem, just moving problem from one point to the other. I mean, if we could come up with a better solution, a way we're getting out on onto Row Road, I'm not against this loop. I just don't think it's a, I just think you're moving one problem, you know, like from here to there. That's all.
Thank you. Dr. Goetz?
Nothing more, thanks.
Mr. Donovan?
No comment.
Mr. Nagel?
I'd like to talk just a little bit about what Levi said, and some of our, the borrowing that we've done in the past. The gentleman probably told Levi that our borrowing, that running a deficit was okay kind of back then, it would work itself out, because we weren't at a level of borrowing that could potentially run us into negative numbers. We are close to that. We have a lot of, a lot of things that we need to fix. This list is important. Elementarys are important. I just, I'm advocating that we just take our time, make sure that we know what our numbers are, so that we can choose wisely going forward. The other thing that I want to make sure that the public knows is that the football field or the stadium that we just approved is and does not support football. We still have a lot of work to do on that. We have to go into redesign to go through traffic studies, and a fair amount more money invested in that. I'm also want to make sure that we get enough money, or study this enough, that we have room for capital improvements. We may not. So I'm hoping that administration can actually pin that out to make sure that I'm incorrect. I'd like to be proven wrong. So, but I want to move forward and make sure that everybody gets what they need, including elementarys.
Thank you. I just want to say that I'm super proud of this board. This is one of our first big decisions that we've made. I mean, it's not officially official, but to be able to work together and to find some common ground to move forward, that's huge, and this is a huge step forward. And I think that if we can continue to find a common ground, that we will continue to do great things and continue to do good work. Moving on to the information, date savers, January tenth, the athletics committee is meeting at four PM. That is the one committee that will be meeting at four PM. Facilities is meeting on the eighteenth, budget and finance, the twenty-second, other meetings. Reminder that this Friday and Monday, Martin Luther King Day, the students are not in school. And January sixteenth, the high school marching band concert is at seven PM in the high school auditorium. And is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.